It is about 7:02. We'll start with who's present tonight. We have Rick Ressman, member, Peter Coffin, vice chair. I am Megan Kelly, chair. We have our land use administrator, Robin, and member Kyle Beish. We are down one member this evening. We'll start with our meeting minutes from last month. Anyone have any?
Who would they be adopted?
As written.
Yes, as written.
And I'll second that.
Any edits that anyone feels that need to be made? No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. That's done. We have one applicant this evening. If you'd like to come forward. We have the father and son construction, property owner for residential village at Granite Fields condominium. We are, we received a variance request for the terms of Article 110, commercial zone C3, section 110, 4A, prohibited uses of the town of Kingston zoning ordinance, and ask to allow construction of one age restricted, single family residential condominium unit to be located within the 1,000-foot setback, no closer than 150 feet. So asking for a variance of 50 feet from Route 125. Before you guys get started with the presentation, I just want you to know that we are down one board member tonight. You are entitled to a full board if you, it is your decision if you would want to continue till next month or not. But I just want to state that we are four members instead of five tonight. Okay. This is the plan? Yes. When you do speak, if you could just click the button on the microphone and keep it on the table. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Robin. It's nice to see everybody. This was a variance request that was granted a little over two years ago since last. Peter, you were on that board, I believe, at the time?
Yes.
I don't recognize, I don't know if you were on the board at the time?
I, we were just getting voted in, Con.
No, I think that if you look back, I'm the only one left over from that board.
Probably.
Yeah.
So my first question is simply this. Is this something that can just be simply reinstated? If you've got a chance to?
No, I can answer that very quickly. We've had this come up about years ago. Variancees that expire have expired, period.
Okay.
And there was problems with that one, too, that some legal problems that so that it was, even if it hadn't expired, it was.
Well, I didn't know if we just wanted to have a very, very short one or not.
No, it's.
So I could, I could certainly read into the record my introduction here and then answer any questions that you might have. But it's got a little bit of a history. So if you want to just take a few minutes, I'll kind of read this into the record and kind of get everybody familiar with the problem. Okay. Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates here with Tony Vellagoggi, president and board of director for Granite Fields condo. And not with us right now, but may wander into the room at any moment is Todd Fitzgerald, father and son construction. He's the applicant on this application. If this moves forward, we get site plan approval, he'll be, he'll be the builder taking care of this unit here. So the intent of the application is to seek a variance from the zoning board adjustment for the owner's applicant to relocate one of the proposed age restricted, single family residential units from its current location, approved location, to a new location that would be partially within the 1,000-foot setback from Route 125. So as I said, the request was previously granted on February 10th, 2022, for the former owner, that would be Hawks Ridge of South Kingston LLC, that was owned and operated by Jim DeFrain. As a lot of people know, Jim DeFrain passed away in 2023, and the rights to the unit have now been deeded to the condominium, condominium association. The association would like to, at this point, finalize the construction of the development, and this unit remains as the final unit to be constructed. Whereas the variance was granted more than two years ago, it is no longer valid, and this application is being resubmitted for your consideration. So just to kind of run through the property and what we're looking at here. The entire property is identified as tax map R3 lot 4. It's located on Route 125, contains approximately 169 acres. The entire site lies within the commercial 3 zone and is affected by the 1,000-foot age restricted residential setback from Route 125. The property is divided into five distinct land units, condominium areas of both commercial and residential use. The largest land unit area, LU3, is dedicated to the golf course and supporting clubhouse with residential condominiums above. LU2 supports a contractor's yard. LU5 supports an indoor sports recreation building, and LU1 is a proposal for two commercial condominium units currently approved but not yet constructed. The subject of this application is the approved and substantially complete age restricted residential development on LU4. This development, known as the residential village at Granite Fields condominiums, is located within the southeast corner of the property on approximately 14 acres. The community consists of 34 residential units with the majority fully completed, a few partially completed, and this one unit not yet constructed, which is the subject of this application. So for the most part, it's completely built out with this is being kind of like the last little step to finalize the project. So all of the units are located adjacent to or just outside the 1,000-foot residential setback established from the center line of 125. Each unit is located on its own limited common area, allowing a limited amount of yard space for each owner. Two private roadways access the development, Bent Grass Circle and Mulligan Way. A shared community well provides the water supply and a shared community septic system provides the sewage needs. All supporting services and infrastructure are in place and maintained by the condominium association. So the subject of this application focuses on one of the not yet constructed units, Unit 20, which is also identified on the town catch card as R3 lot 4, LU4020. I'll just abbreviate it, call it Unit 20. As this board is well aware, this particular unit has created contention between the planning board and the previous developer prior to Mr. DeFrain, whom had elected to move the potential dwelling unit without planning board approval. So I'll get into a little bit of the history. So the original site plan recorded in 2013 showed Unit 20 located as one of the first units on the west side of Mulligan Way, and that would be situated in front of Units 18 and 19. The proposal at that time would have a shared driveway for Units 18 and 19 behind Unit 20, going around that unit and then splitting to each unit. As the project was constructed, Units 18 and 19 deviated from the approved site plan, and individual driveways were constructed for each unit, resulting in the driveway for Unit 19 being placed through the middle of the area reserved for Land Unit 20, where that house would have been constructed. So in an effort to address the issue, that previous developer instructed his engineer to record a plan, and this is in 2018, which Unit 20 would be relocated across the street within Bent Grass Circle Loop in between Units 3 and 4. This was done without the planning board approval that I spoke of and not recognized until a footing was poured for the relocated Unit 20. The work was eventually stopped upon close scrutiny by various town officials. The unit, as well as other alterations from the approved plan in regards to roadway and drainage construction, the project was issued a cease and desist at that point. So Jim DeFrain basically took over from that previous developer, stepped in. He made great strides in correcting the issues created by the previous developer and had invested considerable time, effort, and energy in correcting the drainage issues with the roadway. This was done with full cooperation, approval of the planning board and condominium association. So with that addressed, Jim had turned his attention to completing the unfinished units and building out the rest of the development. So in an effort to address the location of Unit 20, he had submitted the previously approved variance request in which the area for 20 and its associated unit would be located from its original location on Mulligan Way to Bent Grass Circle to just right of Unit 34 and left the proposed community building, which is not yet constructed. So that's where it would be located, just inside the 1,000-foot setback as we show it on that plan. So based upon previous discussions with the various town agents and condominium members, this location is preferable to the revised location attempted by the previous developer in the middle of Bent Grass Circle, where a structure located there would have blocked access to the Leach Field and some of the other infrastructure. So this new location proposed is straddling just within the 1,000-foot residential setback established from the center line of 125. The new location fits well with the existing development and is able to tie to both the existing sewer water services. So it, granted, it's just within the 1,000-foot setback. It's close and easily ties to those supporting sewage and water supply needs. They're right there where we're proposing this. So, so yeah, it should be also noted that upon the granting the variance in 2022, we did submit a site plan to the planning board to further development of that proposed unit, and we came very close to a final approval. We had our board engineer comments addressed, Rockingham Planning, which is now the planning director. We had his comments addressed. And Mr. DeFrain, as people knew, liked to mix it up a little bit and couldn't come to a full agreement with condominium association on other matters not relating to Unit 20. And so at that point, he stopped and removed the application, which was a shame because we were so close at that point to finalizing this development. And now, now that the condominium association has control of it, they want to reinstate that approval, get back to the planning board, build this final unit, get the final payment, code down, final code payment down, and finish the project once and for all. So that's the hope. The money generated from the sale of the unit will allow for all this to move forward. Many people here tonight, if not all of them, are here in support of it. This is something that's been going on since the inception of the original site plan. I've been involved. Jim got me involved years ago, and I would love to see this thing finalized, as I'm sure a lot of people would. So any questions? I think I took a bit of time there, but as you can see, there's a little bit of history to this.
I do, you said that Unit 20 was, relocation was approved. And in fact, that's not entirely true. Right now, the approved location of Unit 20 is in front of 18 and 19, right? Or 19?
It's still, yeah, it's still.
It is. So that's the approved site plan.
Exactly.
So this brings up the question of whether, since the applicant is the owner of Unit 20, or sorry, has permission from the owners of Unit 20. The question is whether a variance is needed because Unit 20 is located, as per the deed that you provided to us and everything else, in its location at the, on the approved plan. It was the one that was approved in whatever year it was, but showing it in, completely within the residentialized zone. And therefore, it doesn't need any variances to, to build. It would have, you'd have to move other houses to make, to build it, and it would be very difficult, but.
It would be very difficult.
Yeah. So, so, but nonetheless, that's where that location is. So I mean, I could make a motion now that, that Unit 20, the application isn't, doesn't require a variance. And to move dismissal of that. However, for discussion's sake, I would point out that the entire plan for, and the zoning board approval never approved relocation. The zoning board, we, we cannot approve relocation of a unit. That's entirely the planning board and the condominium association and everything else, and the judge's order, whatever it was, from the, from the case where they eliminated Unit 20. And in fact, the planning board, I know from being there at the time, specifically said that Unit 20 needed to be, as a condition of approval of the drainage system. Unit 20 needed to be removed from the plans. And I think that's based on the judge's decision and everything else. So Unit 35 is the unit that has to be the applicant for this variance because the entire variance that's required is the portion on Unit 35, which is a non-residential lot. And so it, the application should be for Unit 35 to become a residential or partially residential lot. And that, of course, we don't deal also with lot line adjustments and subdivision of parcels and things like that. That would all be done by the planning board and by the Rockingham County deeds as far as lot line adjustments. However, in order to do that, to make 35 a partially residential lot, you'd need a variance for that lot, 35. Because I look at the plans, the entire encroachment on the setback, you know, outside of the 1,000-foot setback or into the 1,000-foot commercial-only setback is on Lot 35. So Lot 20 can't be the applicant. And the owner of Lot 20 can't apply.
I guess I'm confused. Then how was it possible that we were able to get relief for?
Well, you, you actually didn't, that was overlooked. The fact that the, that LU4020 was listed as the address for the applicant. It was never discussed. I looked at the minutes again at the February 2022 meeting of the ZBA. And if you look at the notice of decision, there's absolutely no mention of Unit 20 in there. The, the variance that was approved was to allow residential 50-foot variance in the, for residential construction. And that was on, as per the plan, shown on Unit 35. Which is, you remember, at one point when you first presented plans was, it's, it's, it's only approved for a clubhouse and non-residential clubhouse. And there was a point at which one of the plans came before, showed it as being a commercial building, and that got changed back to being proposed clubhouse. But that's, that's where the variance was granted for, was for that 50-foot setback. Unit 11, Unit 20, its current location. And the only one, you know, is, is back down on Brent Grass Circle. It's, I mean, near Brent Grass Circle on Mulligan Way. So it's, we can't, as a board, grant a variance for Unit 20. And yeah, things, mistakes were making, made. Obviously, the planning board made a mistake when they waived a zoning ordinance to allow construction of buildings within 60 feet of each other. That, you know, obviously, that's become before the planning board again. And the, so if you went to the planning board at this point for amended site plan, that 20, 60-foot regulation would either require a variance also or a, yeah, or you'd have to wait till maybe the zoning law got changed. But, but, but that was a mistake. The board granted a waiver to something it couldn't waive. The planning board did back, way back in the early days of approving that first plan with the, with the setback. So the plan you showed here with a 25-foot setback between your proposed Unit 20 and the Unit 34, Unit 34 would also have to be approving that also because you're encroaching on that.
But the setback for the approved site plan is 25 feet minimum. So this is built for that site plan. So I know.
Yeah, but this isn't, but what you're proposing is amended site plan. And we can't really discuss that now because that's, the amended site plan is entirely at the hands of the planning board.
Well, I think we need to discuss it because is that a variance?
That would require a variance. It's an ordinance. Ordinances can't be waived by.
I'm really confused because we were here two years ago. It seemed really straightforward, the position for where Unit 20 was approved.
The position wasn't approved. The position does not approve. The planning board, the zoning board cannot approve repositioning real estate.
But we were looking for relief to.
You were looking for relief to build.
One of the units within the 1,000-foot setback. It seems to me very straightforward. I don't, I don't.
What you, what you've got is.
Maybe I'm just not understanding it, but it's.
Well, what you, what you got, it's in here. The notice of decision is, is Robin's provided.
It's page 31.
31.
Yeah, right there.
31. The, the Board of Adjustment voted to grant your request for 50 plus or minus foot variance to the terms of Article 110 of the town Kingston zoning ordinance to permit construction of one age restricted, single family residential condo unit, part of Granite Fields condominium, to be located within the 1,000-foot setback of Route 125.
Correct.
The amended site plan will need to be approved by Kingston Planning Board. So.
Right.
So, so you got.
So they're gonna say Unit 20, is that what the hangup is?
It wasn't Unit 20. You got permission to, to build its move point because that's expired. But.
Correct. I, I get that, but I mean, I don't really understand what the problem is.
But the problem is that the, the variance you're requiring is on Unit 35. And the owners of that unit.
There is no Unit 35 as far as residential. There's only 30.
I know that.
Residential units.
But that's, that's the land unit that you're, you're getting, trying to get the variance for. It's, the reason you're needing to get a variance is because it's not residential, as you just said. And, and so the people who own that unit would have to grant, it was Hawks Ridge, I believe, LLC at the time, but would have to.
The association owns that now.
Sorry. Everyone in the audience has to come up during public comment. You just need the applicant to.
Approval to apply for variance only to the, for Unit 20. In your minutes, there's absolutely, you can read even the revised request, which, because the first one didn't, was just to about taxes and selling a property. It had nothing to do with variance. There's no mention of variance in the first permission. The second permission came about just because we pointed that out. Only talks about Unit 20. There's no reference to Unit 35, which is the unit that needs the variance. Do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I don't understand. Unit 35 is a clubhouse.
It's a clubhouse, right.
Right. So we're one of, we're, all we're simply doing is relocating Unit 20 from where it was approved. Okay? But we need, what we want to move it to is within a 1,000-foot setback, which we require variance. And then if the variance is granted, then we can go back to per site plan approval. That's it. It's that simple.
Right. But you, the land, the land underneath, the land that's owned, and I understand it's probably been transferred, but is Unit 35. The land that the variance is required for is Unit 35. It's plain and simple on the, on the, all the plans that you submitted.
Let's try and simplify this a little bit, Peter. So does, are they here too soon then? Is that where you said, like, do they need to get an approved site plan and?
Well, no, because they think they can't get an approved site plan for what they want to do without having the variance to, to, to build.
Yes, I mean, we can't move forward without the variance.
Right.
And we're just trying to finish this project. This is a very reasonable request. And this was supported by the planning board, it was supported by the previous voting.
Time out, time out. The, Charlie, Charlie, the planning board never, the, the planning board never approved Unit 20 after it was attempted to be relocated. And in fact, you were told, because you were there.
Look at this plan here, and we show Unit 20 where it was approved on the original site plan.
Right.
Okay? Which is not a viable location for it. So we're looking for relief to move it to this, within this 1,000-foot setback.
Right. But we, we can't get that. We can't grant the relief to move it. Nonetheless, the last word that the select board had was that that unit didn't exist and that the planning board confirmed that. And it was a condition of approval was, was that Unit 20 be removed from the amended site plan, or sorry, the drainage plan perhaps, no, the relocation of the.
You look at that plan, and it still says on the cover sheet, that's the condominium development of 34 units. They didn't want me to show that Unit 20 because it's in litigation. Simple as that. That's all there was to it.
But we're gonna, we're just getting.
We never agreed to.
Okay.
No, wait a minute, let me finish.
Yeah.
We never agreed to eliminate Unit 20. We never agreed to go to 33 units as a full buildout. It says right on the plan, you look in the cover sheet, 34-unit subdivision.
Okay.
Okay?
And how about the Unit 35?
What about Unit 35? That's the clubhouse.
That's the clubhouse. So there's, there's really 35 in this.
34.
35 residential units.
Correct.
And they all had to be beyond the residential line and.
They all had to be within.
And, and Unit 35 was the clubhouse.
So we're looking for relief to relocate one of those within the 1,000-foot setback.
So we can't give, we can't give anything to do with.
You can. You're a zoning board adjustment. You can grant relief to us to relocate this Unit 20, just like you did two plus years ago.
We didn't.
It's very simple.
I just read the thing. We never gave permission to relocate anything. We gave permission to construct.
Yes, you did. You gave us permission to relocate a unit within the 1,000-foot setback.
Show me, show me in the decision. Charlie, show me where it says relocate in.
I think at this point, we need to ask for continuance. We need legal opinion.
Yeah. And, and I would say you also gotta look at that Article 106. Because it's a waste of time to come back here. So.
Let me ask a question, Peter. If they were try, if, whether or not this will work or not, I don't know. But, so what you're suggesting is they need to start at the planning board to go back to them to have them review it and try to do something else? Is that?
No. My suggestion would be that if they want a variance to build, it would have to be for the physical location, the, the, the unit as identified here. Because we, we can't grant permission for a unit that is located inside the, inside the residential area. It's, it doesn't exist out here. There is a unit that exists here. And that's the one that you need the variance for. And if that was owned by Joe Smith, Joe Smith would have to be the person who approved the variance request. The very simple fact of the matter is, all we're doing is acting on a variance request to allow construction of a residential unit in a non-residential zone.
Portion.
Well, 50 feet, you know, most of it, but that doesn't matter. It's, it's 50 feet. And that would assume that, you know, if you go to the planning board and they say, well, you need 60 feet between the buildings.
No. No. Because the site plan was approved with a 25-foot setback between buildings.
But that's not, that's not in the site plan.
So it would be amended to that site plan. That doesn't, so if you amend a site plan that was approved under an older ordinance.
It wasn't. It wasn't. The ordinance existed. They, they waived it illegally. That being said, they're now very much aware of that. And it's unlikely that they would amend the site plan in, that would be in a violation of a zoning ordinance without having to get.
Say that in an easier place.
So the, the alternative is we could go forward with a hearing and be up to the chair because the application is from Unit 20, which isn't physicalation. And we could go through all the criteria and determine if the board is even going to consider a variance anyway. But I'm just pointing out that there's a mechanical problem with it and that the, the variance was requested for a location that hasn't, wasn't, wasn't specified on the application. Okay. Actually, the chair would have to open up the public comment, but we're not in the, in the hearing yet.
I think it's confusing. It's still the 34 residential units, but because it's located on mostly.
Yes, there is.
But the land.
It's, it's, it's on the, it's on the plant. Unit 35 exists on paper. It, it doesn't matter what, what it is. Unit 20 hasn't been built. They're saying it exists, though. They're saying it exists, though.
The land is still owned by the clubhouse, like the land-
Everything beyond that 1,000-foot setback line is owned- is listed as Unit 35.
I understand, but I don't think- I don't know that they tend on replacing the clubhouse with a residential unit. I think this is-
No, I understand, but it's still on that thing. It's Unit 35 is the area around the proposed clubhouse, and it's everything that's less than 1,000 feet from Route 125.
Are you still referring to that drainage plan?
No, I'm talking about your site plan.
Okay.
The 1,000-foot setback is on the site plan that was requested by Hawks Ridge to- and it was a change to the town's zoning ordinance to allow residential construction in a commercial zone. And it specifically said that in a commercial zone, age-restricted only would be allowed beyond 1,000 feet, on the theory that it wouldn't affect the commercial aspect of the 125. So that was put there at the request of Hawks Ridge to- and put to the town and voted on, and that became a zoning regulation. So when you produced the plan, you clearly delineated the units. And so, you know, I'm just saying that-
What plan?
The original plan that was produced.
Okay.
Okay, and delineated that, and the plan that's approved is on- the signed plan that's on file-
It's shown here. That's where it's approved.
I can't see that one from here.
That showed where that original location was, and you can see the driveway.
Yeah, 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 that one.
That's- that showed that is the approved location.
Yeah, that's the approved location with the-
And then we're simply seeking relief to move it from that location to this new location, just like we did two-plus years ago.
Yeah, but you're- see, you're moving it onto another unit.
Moving it onto another what?
You're moving it onto another designated unit. These aren't- Landville State doesn't sort of float around in the middle of nowhere looking for a home.
But you do understand, though, if the board granted this variance, the original location of Unit 20 is an all-in void. It doesn't- you can't build there anymore. That's it. This is being relocated over here. The total build-out still remains 34 residential units. They don't get to go back in and say, oh, you know, we'll build another one here now, now that we've got this one over. It's not it. This is 20.
I understand what you're saying. That all happens after- would have happened after the approval by the planning board to allow you to build a unit. Then you would have gone to the planning board, and they would have determined the setbacks, the renaming, renumbering of the units, anything else like that would have been determined by the planning board.
And we're just- this was for approval. We were almost there.
Yeah, I almost didn't- almost doesn't quite make it. That's why we went back and looked and understood that this Unit 20 has an approved location. And so, we could just say that it's this application for Unit 20 isn't required because Unit 20 is physically located within the residential zone, so no relief is needed.
So could we just build one here within the 1,000-foot setback?
If you built within the 1,000-foot setback, you'd be in violation of the town's zoning ordinance.
So where do you get relief?
You get relief.
Where do you get relief, Peter? That's what I'm asking. So if I can't go to this board for relief for that, where do you go?
You would have an applicant that owns Unit 35.
35's the clubhouse.
I understand that 35's the clubhouse.
Well, then why are we talking about the clubhouse?
We're not talking about the clubhouse. We're talking about the land area there that's in- it's non-residential land area. You get permission to build, and presumably this is now the same ownership as Unit 20's, so it shouldn't be difficult, but permission to create a building that's in that designated area of non-residential, 900 and 35.
So does that get rid of their clubhouse now?
No. It would be- you could- that would have to be another partition that the planning board would have to approve on a site plan. ZBA has nothing to do with that, all right? The ZBA already granted once a variance to allow you to build 950 feet from Route 125. That's all they gave you permission for, was the 50-foot variance from the 1,000-foot setback for residential construction.
Right.
That's it.
Right.
They didn't- not moving-
And that's a little more again.
They did no site plan changes, nothing, okay?
Right.
Okay, so-
It was just relief on the setback.
You take that variance, and you go to the planning board-
And we did.
And with a revised site plan. It never came- yeah, it- so you'd have to come with a revised site plan and show what you wanted to do. And then they would go through the whole amended site plan, clean up the things like the current location of Unit 20 in front of 1819, whatever, and that would all be part of your amended site plan. That's all planning board, all right?
It seems like it's an amended- they're trying to resubdivide is what it looks like.
Yeah, because you're breaking 35 into two units.
Do we know where the- is that all common space, or is there actual delineation between the property that's owned that-
You can put-
Unit 35 is on and where Unit 34 ends?
Within reason, you can put the condominium unit anywhere within the LCA, the limited common area. The limited common area being-
Right.
So we're looking for that unit with a 1,000-foot residential setback and its associated limited common area, and then in the same line, we're going to eliminate the limited common area that's around Unit 20 and its approved location, and that was going to become common area.
So is there-
So- One of those things, obviously, we'd have to update with the planning board's approval your condominium documents, which don't allow you to build outside the residential- I can't remember what the term is, but the residential zone, so-
Oh, okay. Hold on one moment. If- I'm not sure how I want to word this. Is there a way to move forward with this application this evening?
I wouldn't think so, because it was posted as Unit 20, as the applicant, and Unit 20, we know, was completely located within the residential zone on an approved plan. So it should have come in as permission from the board who owns 35 and 20 and anywhere else, but regardless, 35, the area that is going to be affected by this to allow subdivision of that lot, or not subdivision, which the planning board would determine, but to allow residential construction within 50 feet.
Okay.
But a person looking at this and looking at the approved plans wouldn't know that Unit 35 was the subject of the variance, because the variance is located entirely within Unit 35. And it also affects the limited common area of Unit 34, but that's- that would be, you know, up to the planning board how they were going to relocate, how they would do that.
Maybe we can't grant a variance for something that doesn't need relief.
Yeah.
We can't.
I understand that, yeah.
We have to reset this for Unit 35, whatever it actually needs relief for. It's just improper to do a variance for something that doesn't need a variance.
The area is insisting on trying to call this Unit 20 and say it's the Unit 20 that needs the variance. And Unit 20 doesn't need a variance because it's not-
So are you saying they need a new site plan with renumbered units?
No, I think they just need a variance request to allow an area outside of- and they'd have to determine the ownership of this Unit 35 lot, which is fine, that probably is easily done. And-
You're saying it needs to be more vague?
Yeah. It means it needs to be basically what the application was written. It says to allow for construction of one age-related, single-family condominium to be located within the 1,000-foot setback, no closer than 950 feet from Route 125.
Is that the original application swearing, or is that this one?
That's this one. I think it's exactly the same as the original.
Oh, hold on, Peter. All right, go ahead.
It seems to me that you're getting hung up on it being called Unit 20, okay?
Right.
Because of Unit 20's past history. Lot 35 is not designated as a residential unit, so it doesn't need a variance. What we do need, though, is the ability to put a residential house that violates the setback. We can call it a lot, a buildable lot.
Yeah, I agree.
With that satisfied, the board here, that we are looking to-
I would even call it a lot.
Up there that violates the setback line. And then, with your approval hopefully, we can then go to the planning board, and Charlie and everyone can do the proper setback lines to satisfy their requirements.
I think you've hit upon it.
I'm sorry?
As simple as that is, just to say it's from the-
So can we amend that this evening? We have all the parties here.
Unfortunately, it was posted the way it was- let's see, how was it posted? No, Dwelling Shun is Unit 20.
I mean-
So Six Molligan Way, which is- Molligan Way is down here. That's- okay, so that- yeah, unfortunately, the people who received the notification believe it is Six Molligan Way that you were talking about.
Peter, it strikes me that this is a subdivision of- it's a new subdivision, because they're trying to subdivide a piece off what was the clubhouse land-
Yeah.
Into a new piece.
But we're moving common land to a different common land spot.
But condo unit is-
Within the whole development.
Condo unit isn't common. The supply I'm saying is, if you understood that you shouldn't have referred to it as Unit 20, and in the application, it wasn't. It just went out on the notification and the postings, the advertisement, you know.
I mean, it's referred to as Unit 20 so that people know what they're speaking of.
Yeah, which is Six Molligan Way.
It's shown as over here in a- to construct it in a new location tween Units 34 and 35.
Right, but it's actually-
The reason for denial is that, so it's been heavily denied.
But it's actually using, taking Unit 35's space. It's not between them.
The reason for denial is that it is in violation of 1,000-foot restricted.
Yeah. And so-
So what is your recommendations to allow us to move forward?
What do you think? My big hangup, I understand that it's the ownership's the same, but is that we can't change the application. Although, quite frankly, the application doesn't say Unit 20 up here in-
No, just the notice.
Some of you know the history of this situation. And the Association has been put in a situation where we cannot finish our development with final roads, lights, et cetera, without being able to build that final unit. And all parties have gotten together and are on the same page that we want this done. And all we're looking to do is go through the proper steps as we have done in the past, and whether there was wrong information or longer proven given, what we are looking for is for this board, and then eventually the planning board, is to allow us to build that final unit within the town ordinance so that we can finish that, our development. And we seem to be getting stuck up on 20.
Yeah.
And again, you have all the parties here that can call it whatever we want to satisfy you and allow us to move forward. And that's what we're asking you.
But to Rick's point, and yeah, I think since that's all under the same ownership of common area-
Right.
It's not quite the same as a subdivision, because even though you're taking land that was designated for another purpose, you know, that's up to the planning board to decide.
Right, so I mean, if this is- so if this is all common area, I'm just- I mean, personally, I just don't know how we can't just discuss the location-
I'm guessing-
It's almost like they're making- by putting the lot here, that becomes a non-conforming lot, does it not? Because it doesn't meet the- it's not the square footage requirement that we'd be required.
I mean, us discussing and then- and potentially allowing the building within that 1,000-foot setback does not mean that it's going to go to the planning board and get approval. They are going to have to go-
They would have to meet the other requirements.
And the planning board may decide that there are other requirements they need to, you know.
Lot size.
Lot sizes, setbacks.
Setback. I mean, they could- they could come up with a whole bunch of other things that's not on us. The only question right now is whether or not we would allow them to build within that 1,000 feet.
And I-
And I think because it is common space.
And the only reason I'm asking, let's go ahead and go ahead with the hearing-
Yeah.
And have them go through the criteria, is because- It's because of what was posted officially in the paper that-
I don't-
We can't even call that Unit 35.
Right, I mean-
What's that?
I think the only way- the only way to describe it is, it is labeled as Unit 20, and they want to put it over here. So in order to- I mean, if we started calling it a different number, people would probably get confused in the notice, but-
We have the approved plan, but what is that?
Okay, that's not the approved plan. Where- that's the plan where we're showing with the relocation.
No, what I'm talking about is the registered Plan D, whatever it is, that shows the unit by name, land units. What?
It should be page number nine, Peter.
I just want to see what is recorded. No, that's not-
That's Plan D 717.
Yeah, okay, so it says- all it says is proposed community development. Oh, yeah, it has a number 35 on there.
Right. So that's why, when they were describing where to put-
Yeah.
Where they want-
You know, that's true. It- that right now is just common area.
Right.
And as long as the condominium-
It was used to describe the location for the purpose of-
Right.
Understanding it.
So that red on our copies, the red Unit 20 that was not built-
Right.
Is showing where the unit itself is currently approved for.
Right.
To get it- no, yeah.
All right, so-
So I guess is if- if they want to request the same thing they did in the application here, which is that they wanted a variance to allow a setback, you know, but I would strongly suggest that you don't use the failure to have built Unit 20 in its correct location as a valid hardship reason, because obviously that was created by the-
I didn't hear that.
Deceased Mr. Crane, but you can't say that it's a hardship not to be able to allow a mistake, because Unit, what is now Unit 4, what was- where they moved Unit 22 originally, which was inside Bentgrass Circle, and they built a foundation, and that was the one that got stopped for a long time. It was built too close to the road. It was not built to the specifications to not be quite logically, because it wouldn't have fit in there. the specifications and not be quite logically because it wouldn't have fit in there. And, and that's the one that was, I believe, whatever happened, it was allowed to go ahead after they eliminated Unit 20 and they renamed that number Unit 4.
Okay.
So I would just say, yeah, I, I, I'm okay with it. So we have the application.
Yes.
And we, we just cannot make sure that we cannot approve.
We're not approving a relocation.
A relocation of anything. Okay? All we would be doing is deciding whether you would be allowed to build any building.
Within that setback.
Within that.
Any residential building.
950 feet instead of 1,000 feet from.
Yes.
The setback. Is that, do you think that's okay, Rick? So.
Okay. Do you, you have any comments at the moment? I think there's been a lot of comments going forward.
You may want to quit while you're ahead.
Do, do any board members have any?
We can go ahead with the hearing, I think.
Huh?
If I'm guessing, I think we're going to go ahead with it very much.
I mean, I'm comfortable moving forward with this wording. I.
If it's challenged, I don't know if anybody's going to.
I mean, it refers to the construction of an, of an age-restricted, single-family condominium shown as Unit 20. I think that's really just.
Just shown as, yeah.
Yeah, so they're still asking for an age-restricted, single family, not necessarily calling it 20, it's just being shown as to show where it originally was supposed to be and where they would like to build now. So for that, after all of that, I, I do agree with the wording. I don't know if any, anyone else has any thoughts on that.
Well, where they want to build it now, that's not within the 1,000 foot.
I think we shouldn't use.
Where they want to build it now is within the 1,000 feet of, so.
They want to build a, a unit.
I'm looking at three, seven, seven, one, seven.
Just let's not, let's not refer to, you know.
Refer to this one.
Location, relocating or anything else, we just want to talk about.
Next to 34.
Whether we want to let them build a unit.
Yes. So the set, so the setback that they're asking for is right next to Unit 34. If, if, if an age-restricted building was allowed to be built there.
Because I thought they were trying to build off of Plans 4, 1, 1, 5, 0.
1, 1, 5, 0, which is fine. Which, which page are you on?
I thought that, this is the one. I thought they were trying to do this.
Which page are you on?
I'm on page 10.
No, that, so that is where the, they tried to move the unit to after plans were, that had been approved were changed without approval, and then that site was never approved as well. So we are looking at.
That plan was recorded, but wasn't reported with planning board approval.
Right.
Yes. So we're looking at this big, the large sheet.
Okay, so next to 34, and that is.
So if you look over here.
Within the 1,000-foot setback.
Yes. So the original location from the original approved plan is over here next on Mulligan Way, under your right hand.
Yep.
And then the, the area that they'd like a variance for is.
On the left.
Is on the left.
Yes, okay.
All right, is that?
No, that.
Making more sense now?
That clears it up, yes.
Okay. And that's showing the movement of one.
It's not an addition.
Yes.
So a 34th unit, or you can say, it just, I think we should use the indefinite article so that we're talking about a generic building, not a specific.
A unit.
A unit.
So, not an additional unit, it's, it's a unit.
It's an, a, a unit.
That completes the.
Beyond what's approved, but it, that's not our business.
Yeah.
A unit, and then the planning board determines.
Okay.
Whether it can be done or not.
So they've basically gone through the whole plan. I'm actually wondering if I just want to open it up for public comment and then we can. I think, I think at this time, we will open it up for public comment, whether you are for or against any, any portion of what's going on. If you could, do you mind just moving one of the microphones over to the chair over there? Yeah, and then if you come up, please state your name and your address before you begin speaking. But you're welcome to come up then.
It seems that this is a lot of semantics about numbering, but.
Could you tell us your name?
My name is Marilyn Healy. I live at 25 Bentgrass.
Thank you.
I've come to many of the meetings over the years, you know, trying to complete our project. And what I'm hearing is that perhaps we, we just obtained ownership from Mr. DeFrain in July after paying back taxes and, and for years that we're not, were unpaid, and he kept ownership of that, of Lot 35 with the intent to do this very thing that we're trying to now do. So that we could, he could get funds to complete our, the grading of the roads and complete the project when there's so, there's so many variances over the years, and we should have been done within 10 years of the start of the project, is my understanding. And it's well beyond that, and we're still going without our roads paved and final grading and lighthouses and the funds from the sale of a part of Lot 35, which we were just able to obtain by paying the back taxes. And it is legally now the HOA's property is well approved by all of our residents that we want to go forth so that we can attempt to finalize and, and have any semblance of funds to go forward and finish our project without the further deterioration of our roads and, and we, we, is it a matter of us submitting another application with, from, directly from the board?
No, I think we've gotten past that.
Okay.
We, we are.
Our hands have been tied because we, we had, we had never obtained the property until July.
Right, I just, I stand with all that. But just to make a clarified point, you said there are a lot, a lot of variances with yours. I believe that the variance with the setback was the only one that's been granted for the village. I.
Well, with the, there's been a lot of back and forth.
But that, that was the planning board.
With Mr. DeFrain.
Yeah, oh yeah. That's separate from us entirely, so.
So this, the, it's a matter of the wording of it, it seems to me that you have it, that it's, the variance is to allow us to infringe, a new unit would infringe upon the setback, the 1,550 feet.
That's the only, only thing we're discussing today.
We're moving past the wording and moving forward with the application.
Yeah.
And so as an association, our hands have been tied for way too long to complete our project and.
Yeah, unfortunately, financial hardship is not what they mean by hardship, you know, when they talk about that, and I, I sympathize with you, I've been through this entire thing at the, on the other side, and the lawsuits and everything else, and I understand there was, there was getting completion issues long before Mr. DeFrain died and.
Sounds like it's been quite a time.
It's, it's been a tough time and, and, you know, obviously, as you've heard, you know, plans have been registered that weren't approved and all that kind of stuff's gone on, so we, we're just, we just got to deal with our small portion of it.
Okay.
And, and use the state criteria to make our decision as to what, the background, you know, as sympathetic as we may be as individuals about the financial burden and all that, it's really not, we, we can't use that as justification to allow, there's got to be the reasons that you'll hear tonight about how you get a variance, so. And.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and the reason we were kind of touchy about this is because the last time it went for variance, the ownership issue came up during the meeting, I don't remember, getting a nod in head, and, and the question was asked, Mr. DeFrain, one of the few times he's spoken at a meeting, because Charlie can attest, got up and, and made a point that, yes, he did own that unit and, and the common area, discovered later that it, that may not have been entirely true. And the person who asked the question, you know, said, well, what if we find out that that's not entirely true? And said, well, that would affect the validity of the variance. And the variance was a lot to expire, so it became a moot point and never had to be brought up. But that's why tonight, we're a little touchy about who owns the underlying land that the variance is being requested on, because it, it got messed up last night.
So I think we're headed in the right direction, so thank, thank you. I think we're headed in the right direction, so.
Does proof of ownership, would that may have any weight in?
I, I think, I think it's been established that the homeowners association had a meeting and they clarified it, and we have absolutely no reason to believe that the ownership hasn't been transferred. It's on your tax.
Would anyone else like to give any comment on? No? Okay, then we will close public comment. Is there anything else that we would like clarification on to try?
Before we start.
Before we start moving forward with this? Yep.
Do you want to have? I, I think Charlie should go through.
I think Charlie should go through the five.
Well, I think at this point, I think everything that we've discussed tonight warrants a little bit more consideration on my behalf as well as the association, so I'd like to ask for a continuance, please.
Okay, absolutely.
Take a vote on it, yeah.
Huh?
Take a vote on it and ask what date and stuff like that.
Yep.
What revised plans and all that. Get Robin's input.
So at this moment in time, I would take a, entertain a motion to continue the meeting? That will we go from here?
We need a motion to continue the meeting to a date.
To a date and time.
Time certain, and that was, how much time do you think you would need to prepare any next available meeting? Okay, and Robin, when would that?
December 12.
But when would you need the, one, 10 days prior?
This is a continuance, so it doesn't have to be.
But, but any revised plans or?
Say, we're looking at Thanksgiving, maybe on the 3rd.
December, is that?
December 3rd.
Well, we're discussing when any modifications to the application would need to be in, in order to meet on December 10th, you said?
December 12th.
12th.
12th, so we have the Tuesday, 3rd. So we don't have to post anything.
Right.
It's just distributing information.
All right, so I guess, so at this time.
Information by December 3rd?
December 3rd.
And then the meeting would be the 12th?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So I would, I, that's fine, I will make a motion to continue this meeting until December 12th.
Second.
With all supporting documentation to be due by December 3rd.
Do we have to say at the applicant's request?
Yes.
At the applicant's request.
Continue at the applicant's request.
At the applicant's request. And seconded by Mr. Usman? Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye? All opposed? Okay, so we will revisit this on December 12th and look forward to hearing more of what you have. For all here or all listening, this is your notification of the continuance, there will be no renotification by furbutters. Yes.
Do you need them to clarify any reference to 20?
Just take any reference to Unit 20 out, just say a, build a structure.
It is. Right.
Yeah, we're not going to do, we've already started the hearing.
The application itself doesn't refer to 20, I, and it, to me, the only references to 20 was for visual purposes on the sheet, it wasn't, it was.
We're okay with them leaving it as 20?
No, don't leave it as 20. Just take, I would, well, yeah, you're saying that's a new hearing, though.
Right.
We, we have the application, I would just, I think Charlie's got the idea that, that we were talking about a generic unit, and all we can do is, is approve a construction of a unit within the zone of the setback, I mean, the commercial zone. And we, we can't approve any relocation or moving or renaming or you name it. And.
Right, I mean, we can't really.
We can't change the application.
We can't really change anything on here because it's legal notice, but I.
And the reason we mentioned that other ordinance was because of, you know, the setback building ordinance says that we had talked about it, planning board, that the, that may affect his modification of plans and, so.
Good with it as written, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, before everyone goes, Robin gave us the calendar for 2025. I looked it over, it didn't look like anything. It looked like everything was on there, so.
Yes, I put the list on the back so you can see it, but it's just a snapshot. So if you text, you text.
I, I like visual layouts like this.
Yeah.
I think that much better.
And people were trying to get messed up with the other one because it was formatted differently, like I think it started on Monday instead of Sunday, so that when you look at it, it messes people up.
Yeah, Sunday to Saturdays.
And that was the format of that calendar, so we're changing it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
That's the way the rest of the world works in the United States.
Thanks, sorry, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
We were discussing if there was any more, any more board business. I don't believe so, I don't know. Rick, oh yeah, Rick, Peter and I are attending a conference on Saturday, hopefully we'll come back with lots of good information. And Shaw will also not be in attendance in December.
What's that?
Shaw will also not be in attendance in December.
Okay.
We really need to find some alternates. And I don't know where to look for them. Is this something that we need to discuss, we can adjourn in?
Well, let's adjourn the meeting.
All right, we will, we'll adjourn the meeting.